Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:06. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please?
Sure. Our eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much for this day that you've blessed us to see. You've kept us, Father, from all hurt, harm, and danger, and we cannot be more than grateful for everything that you've done, Father. We ask you, Father, that you would bring wisdom, understanding into this meeting tonight, Lord. Let everything be done in decency and order. We thank you for your loving kindness and your tender mercies. We ask you, Father, we continue to ask you, to put a hedge of protection around the city of Glen Arden and its citizens, its leadership, and all of its inhabitants, all of the businesses, Lord, all of our officers that are out in the streets, Lord, whether they're at the shopping center or wherever they are in the city of Glen Arden, put a hedge of protection around them. We thank you for your loving kindness. We thank you for your tender mercy. It is in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Giannis traveling and not able to get the meeting. Councilwoman Harrison?
Here.
Councilwoman Harry?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
Second.
Any discussion or opposition? Hear none by unanimous decree. The motion is hereby accepted. Sorry. All right. First on agenda is proposed increase to real property tax presentation by City Manager Habata and City Treasurer, Mr. Dean Stewart. City Manager?
Good evening. The ordinances you have in your package include one version that would keep the rate that is currently the tax rate for this year, which would constitute an increase above the constant yield rate. The second version, version number two, would accept the state's constant yield tax rate at .3273 per $100 assessed value. And these are here before you for hearing from citizens, taxpayers regarding exceeding the tax constant yield rate or not.
Citizens, as you may recall, if you looked at the paper, the constant yield rate, the proposed constant yield rate has been advertised in the newspaper.
Yes.
And so this special public hearing is opportunity for you to make your voices heard on the constant yield rate and any other piece of legislation we have tonight, which is two, an emergency ordinance to reappropriate funds fiscal year 2023, and an emergency ordinance to set the real property rate and personal property tax rates. So at this time, we will open the floor to citizens' comments before we vote. So if you are a citizen in person, please raise your hand. I'll call you to the podium. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand or type in the chat, and I will recognize you. And you will have, if you can state your name, you have five minutes, and we'll go from there. Are there any public comments? Okay. Well, hear none, we'll move on to the legislative vote. First up is ordinance 07-2023, an emergency ordinance to reappropriate funds for fiscal year 2023. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor as an emergency ordinance?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call to have this as an emergency ordinance, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes. Okay. Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance, please?
Emergency Ordinance Number 07-2023, sponsored by Council President Derek Curtis on behalf of the administration, the regular of being introduced and voted on today. An emergency ordinance to appropriate funds for fiscal year 2023. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is a municipal corporation of the Senate of the state of Maryland and operating under Article 9-E of the Constitution of Maryland, Subsection 5-202 of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended, and whereas under Charter Article 6, General Powers of the Council, Section 606, Number 5 appropriations, it states that the city council has the authority to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose within the powers of the council. And whereas the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services has awarded $87,000 to the city of Glen Arden under the Police Retention and Recruitment Grant Program with the stipulation that these funds are expended by June 30, 2023. And whereas under the city of Glen Arden Charter, Article 3, Section 308-E states, "An emergency ordinance shall become effective on the date specified by the ordinance, but no ordinance shall become effective until approved by the mayor or passed over his or her veto by the council." And whereas the city council has the ultimate fiduciary responsibility to steward municipal monies, indeed, the following additional appropriation of FY23 city budget to be necessary to expend the grant funds as follows. Section 1, Police Retention and Recruitment, P-R-A-R grant. Revenue, appropriate $87,000 to Special Revenue Fund Account 20-55-55-4365, Special Revenue, Police, P-R-A-R. And B, appropriate $87,000 for expenditures in the categories authorized by the state grant, including but not limited to the following police department retention and recruitment expenses. Emergency equipment, for example, shields, uniform bonded items, jackets, and t-shirts, advertising, radio, social media for officer recruitment, years of service longevity payments for officers. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this 22nd day of May, 2023, that this emergency ordinance is hereby declared approved. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, that this ordinance shall become effective immediately following approval by the mayor or passage by the city council over the mayor's veto.
Thank you.
Does it matter that the ordinance says that it's sitting in regular session this 22nd day of May 23rd, 2023, since this is a public hearing? Do we need to change that?
We can update that.
It could be updated, yes.
Yep. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
Some.
Is there a second? I second it. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure. Councilwoman Jones?
Okay. It says that the monies are supposed to be used for emergency equipment, says shields. Shields meaning riot equipment? Like a riot equipment shield?
Yes. Uniforms, bonded items, jackets, t-shirts, advertising to recruit new officers, and then years of service longevity payments for officers.
This document that was passed out to us this evening that the city manager presented, it says on here the maximum award for retention is $1,000. Is that for this particular resolution?
Good evening, Chief Bryant. In reference to that, which one are you talking about, ma'am?
The years of service longevity payments for officers. The city manager passed out some documents stating, well, it shows the $87,000. And then the document, the written document behind it in number two, it talks at the last sentence, it says the maximum award amount for retention per officers. So is the retention payment the same as this longevity payment? Or is the longevity payment, will it be a different amount for persons that have been here for a while?
From my understanding, it's the same. It's for the people that's been here. So we got 12 people that's been here over three years. They'll get $1,000. And we have eight people that's been here less than three years. They'll get $1,000.
Okay. So this does, goes with this. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Councilman Harry?
Yes. Okay. First of all, I really wish you could have gotten this earlier so we could have read all of this. We could be more abreast of what's, I mean, more informed of what's going on. So we're saying that longevity bonuses of three years or more, you're going to get $1,000. And it'd be on eight officers that meet that criteria?
Yes.
Okay. And you've got 12 officers that's been here for three years or less, and they're getting $1,000.
Yes.
I guess I don't understand, if you've been here longer, shouldn't you get a little bit more? I'm not understanding why they're getting the same amount. It seems like, you know, if you've been here longer than three years, you should get more than $1,000. Yeah, I'm jumping. What was the?
Criteria?
Yeah. For that, I'm not understanding. It seemed like if you've been here longer, and I know some officers have been here much longer, that you would get a little bit more than somebody who's been here less than three years or less. So what was the criteria that you used to gauge these awards?
Okay. This is the grant itself for each category. That's the way it's spelled out in the grant itself for each category.
That you submitted?
Uh.
The grant application that you submitted to the state?
Just the one, yeah, right. So within the grant for each category, that's the way it's stipulated. They also have parts in there. If you went to college, it's $1,000. If you were in the military, it's $1,000. So it's different categories. If you speak a second language, it's $1,000. So it's broken down into categories like that.
Do you mind if I? So is that, so it's capped out for each officer at $1,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, capped out.
Is that, was that a mandatory requirement of the grant? Or could we have, we could have submitted it differently? I mean, that's what the grant actually requires you to do?
Right. So, yeah, so the grant, they give you like whole numbers for each person. That's the way it's spelled out in the grant.
So if somebody on here is, say, been here three years or more, and they have a college degree, they'll get $2,000?
Yes.
Some.
Go ahead, yeah. Go ahead. Still looking it over.
Councilwoman Fareed?
So it's $1,000 for each criterion met? So it's you, to Councilman Herring's point, so it's not $1,000 max per officer, it's $1,000 max per criterion that they can receive?
Right. For the way it's spelled out in the grant, yeah. So if you qualify for that, that's what it states as far as the payout for it, yeah.
And it says up to a maximum of $1,000. Does that mean you have to give them $1,000, like if they meet one of those criteria? I'm just following up on Councilman Herring's point around the longevity. It's up to $1,000. So could you give those who were here the longest $1,000 and those who were here?
Well, they got different categories. So if you've got three years or under, it's up to $1,000. If you've got three or more, it's up to $1,000. So I don't know. I meet with him tomorrow for the exact, you know, exactly how it works out. But it's pretty much for each category.
Okay. Because it would just seem, if you get the same amount, why are they separating them into different categories? Like, why is it under three years and then above three years? So maybe there's some other?
Yeah. It might be, I don't have the full details on that, so I don't want to give you the wrong answer. But that's the way it's stipulated in the grants itself. So they got each category, and they spell out the amount, the total for each.
Okay. And I'm sorry, because this said it needs to be submitted by June 30, right?
Yes.
So do you already kind of have a layout of how this $87,000 is going to be?
Yes. So for each category, for each category, it's spelled on the far right-hand side.
No, I think.
No, it just says?
No, I think it's on the back of this. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but it looks like it's on the back of this thing where how they plan to disperse the funds.
Right.
Or, you know, how they have it dispersed. I guess this is a temp until you get more information on it.
Ms. Habata, did you?
Yeah. To answer Mr. Herring's observation about just getting it this evening, we just got it this morning in terms of the breakdown. This was a grant that was written overnight. Our grant writer had found that there was a possibility of getting this submitted under the wire, and that's what he submitted based on previous conversations with the chief and staff at the police department. And in terms of the determination of how much was going to be awarded, that was up to the state, and we just got this information today. So when you see, you see the language in the ordinance, it should be branded, and it probably was my mistake, and because of the way the email wrote, was written in terms of a typo, bonded as opposed to, it should be branded. So, you know, not knowing what that exactly meant, if that was a term that related to police work, that's what went into the ordinance.
Okay.
So it should be branded items, if that helps.
So there are eight who qualify for the longevity bonus, which totaled $8,000. The retention bonus, there are 12 that qualify, so that's $12,000. There's one college degree, so that's $1,000. And then the other breakdown, $30,000 for the social media, radio, recruiting, $18,000 for the LEA branded items, and another 18 for the search gloves, tourniquets, rescue tools, and shields, for a total of $87,000. Okay. All right. Councilman Fareed?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Are you confident that you can go through the purchasing process before June 30 to acquire all of these items so that the $87,000 will be fully expended by then?
Very confident. Councilmember Harrison?
So I was going to ask about the vote. I was going to ask if we should be moving forward with voting on it, if there's still some details that need to be hashed out.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
I was asking if we should still be voting on it tonight, if there was some details that still need to be hashed out. I think I heard the chief say that he had to go get some more information. Or, Chief, could you clear that up for me?
Beverly cleared up the information in reference to what I was going to check on, but she just cleared it up. But, yeah, we're ready to move forward. We already have a vendor in place. Initially, it was $130,000, but the state just granted us $87,000, and we already made arrangements for that with the vendors and so forth. So I'll be meeting with the grants writer tomorrow morning, and we'll be putting everything into place. But, yeah, we're pretty confident that everything will be taken care of.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
So I'm seeing under here, search gloves, tourniquets, rescue tools, shields. What about a defibrillator? Do you all have a defibrillator? Can we include that?
I tried to include that, but that didn't fall into this category.
Okay.
Yeah, for that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I guess I would have loved to seen an actual grant application, because I'm still trying to figure out this longevity versus retention, because it seems like, I can see longevity, if you're three years or more, it started at $1,000 and go up. But just capping it at $1,000 for longevity, it just doesn't seem, I don't know, just something doesn't seem right with that. You've been here three years or less, you get a $1,000 bonus. But if you've been here three years or more, you get a $1,000 bonus. And I'm just like, that, for some reason, that just doesn't, not clear on me with that.
I think, I think what they goal is for retention, to retain everybody, just to make sure that we keep the police officers. So it's a number of police departments, municipalities that apply for these grants. So it's set up the same way, that's the way the guideline and the grants are. But I think when you talk about the retention program, it's pretty much, let's keep everybody and don't have anybody leave. So I think that's pretty much what they're saying. So it's pretty much saying, if you're a police officer and we need you, you're going to get $1,000. So I think it applies.
I mean, I guess my thing was that, you know, usually when you have two descriptions, either more and a less, usually the more gets more than the less 10.
Right.
So I'm not just, I didn't understand why they would cap it at $1,000, or if that was just what we chose to do, or if, like I say, somebody's can move around, be moved around another $500 to the longevity bonus versus the retention bonus, so.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I'll go to you, Ms. Habata, first.
I think we can ask to see if there's any flexibility of moving between accounts. That would, that would help. We can talk to Mr. O'Connor tomorrow and find out if there's any flexibility on that.
I'd like to know that. I think, I mean, I just think that if you've been here a long time, you should get a little bit more than somebody that you're trying to retain who's been here three years or less. Because, I mean, what's the incentive, you know?
And could you also ask, oh, maybe you already know this. So how many officers do we have?
How many officers?
Yes.
Oh, we have 19 officers, to include myself, Lieutenant, Captain, and two Sergeants, so.
So are we clear on, and I know, and one, I thank you guys, because you guys did a good job of getting this in under the gun and getting just free money. So, you know, congratulations.
Thank you.
And now it just boils down to just how you allocate it. And to Mr. Herring's point, if I've worked here three years or under, I get $1,000. If I worked here over three years, I get $1,000. Can I do that? Or it's just strictly in its own? Do you get what I'm saying? So to his point, so if I've worked here up to three years, it's $1,000. Over three years, I get an additional $1,000, so that's $2,000. So now I'm getting more than what someone who's only been here three years gets?
Right. So as the city manager stated earlier, we just got the breakdown.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we just got the breakdown. They got it in, they got approved, we're happy about it. When it gets here tomorrow, the bottom line is the $87,000 will be spent, but I totally agree, you know?
Okay.
For seniority purposes and so forth, people that's been here should get more. So I'm pretty sure what they have to do is just move it around the categories. I think the bottom line is for certain categories, as long as it comes to that total of $87,000, we should be able to work it out.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
I have a question.
Okay.
So, she said no.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to suggest that perhaps we go ahead and vote on this, because I think this is just for us to get the $87,000.
Most definitely.
And then when you give the details around how you're going to distribute that, that can be sent out again. And I also wanted to just summarize my understanding. The reason why we're receiving this so quickly and we're trying to turn it around as emergency ordinance is because this was not a planned grant that the city applied for. Our grant writers saw the opportunity, and the window is closing by June 30. So we need to take action now in order to acquire those funds so that they can be expended in time for June 30.
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great. So who wrote these, who wrote this?
Uh, the grant.
Did the city write this or the grant writer?
The grant writer.
Okay. Because in it, it only talks about retention. It does not say anything about longevity when it clarifies the amount of money. It doesn't say anything about longevity. So that's, that's the kind of information that I would want.
Right.
Where is the information concerning longevity? Because the first two paragraphs only talks about the retention piece. And as Councilwoman, I mean, as Councilman Herring stated, retention is one thing and longevity is another.
Right. So it's a retention grant. The grant, part of the name of the grant is the retention grant. So I'll find out all the information tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. All right. Hearing no comments?
Oh, I do have one other thing. Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So is anything on this list, anything on this list requires the council to vote on, because it's over $6,000?
Uh, no.
Any purchase on here? Everything is under $6,000.
Right. So, for example, we did outer covers today for the vest, and it came up to $5,890.
Right under the line. Okay. I just wanted to be sure, because I, you know, I mean, again, you know, that'd throw a monkey wrench.
Right, because it'd hold us back from getting what we need to get, so.
Slow the process down.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. With that, we can move on to vote. I'm sorry.
I'm just waiting to say yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries.
Okay.
6:00.
Last up is ordinance 08-2023, emergency ordinance to set the real property and personal property tax rates. So just a point of clarification. Don't we have to decide which one we're going with first? Because there's no need to have this emergency ordinance if we're sticking with where we are. So, so I open the floor to discussion for council on whether we're sticking with what the current rate is, which will not require a vote, and increasing it to the... I'm sorry, is it in here? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Increasing it to the .3338, which would yield the difference in, what's the total difference?
So the total difference would be around $54,000 to $56,000 is the difference.
I'm sorry, can you say, repeat that again?
Between $54,000 and $56,000 will be the difference.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Habata?
Okay. So, so the budget is based on the constant yield rate for, that we receive information from the State Assessment Office at the lower .3273.
Okay.
Okay. Not the higher one. So it's version number two.
Okay.
With amendment. But you want to take comments, I'm assuming, so. Basically, version two, it accepts the constant yield tax rate of .3273.
Okay.
So it, that number, and then in the third, where it should be, it should be the .3273, will accept the constant yield tax rate of .3273.
Okay.
Is the criteria one or not?
Yeah. That was a typo. So one of them should say the .3273, and...
It's in.
Oh, well, it's, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. You know, we're, the language here was to differentiate between the two. The one proposed at .3338, and the other was .3273.
Which one? Version two or version?
Version two is the one you want and the language needs to change in the one two third whereas. So the number is point three 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 eight that's there. Basically should read, whereas the proposed tax rate for FY twenty-four accepts the constant yield tax rate of point three two seven three.
What line was that again?
That's right here.
The constant yield tax rate. Twenty-six, twenty-six. For last year's, three 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 eight.
And I'm sorry, what was that, that number again?
Point three two seven three.
Yeah, you'll see it in section one below.
Right, I see it. Okay, so this, three 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 eight is incorrect.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, the mayor pointed that out for me and it was very helpful in that regard when I screwed up. Sorry.
And sorry, just again, Mrs. Stewart, you said it would be between fifty-two and fifty-four thousand dollars difference.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Fifty-four and fifty-six thousand dollars, give and take.
So, so I see that there are comments in the crowd. However, we've already bypassed the citizens' comments. But if there aren't, if there are no opposition to open up citizens' comments again, then we can hear from citizens. Are there any oppositions? Is there any opposition to hear from citizens? Okay. So with that, Ms. McDuffie, you can state your name and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Alonda McDuffie. Just have a question. What is the reason for the increase and approximately how much money are we looking at in the increase? Because with this zero point three two seven, I don't understand it, to be honest with you. So on average, how much in additional are we looking at?
On, on average? So in total, the difference collectively from the whole city would be between fifty-six, fifty-four and fifty-six thousand dollars. On average, am I understanding that that it breaks down to?
Okay. So what I can tell you, looking at the range of assessment between, let's say, a property that is at fifty-six thousand up through to a property at seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So let me start with one at seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. They will pay with the rate that is in now, the point three 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 eight, they will be paying an additional, compared to last year, fifty dollars and seven cents.
A year or a month?
For the year.
Okay.
Let's say one at five hundred and sixty-one thousand, they will pay one time, a one-time difference of thirty-six dollars. For one that is at two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, they will be at eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. So that's what the spread would look like. At, let's say, one fifty-three thousand dollars, a property assessed at that rate, would be paying an additional ten dollars compared to what they paid last year. So that's the, the differences we're looking at. If we are to increase the rate, and it's not really increasing the rate, it is keeping the rate as it is now, which is point three 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 eight. However, the constant yield that we got in February from S-DAT is saying that to keep us at paying the same rate as we paid last year, we would be having a rate of three, of point three two seven three.
Okay. I think moving forward, if possible, an example or breakdown like that would be beneficial because whenever anyone sees an increase, it's like a red flag. Speaking for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDuffie.
Can I also, just as this might be clarification, also, Mr. Stewart, this is for, it's, it's based on the assessed value of your house?
Yes.
Where I, like, okay, my assessed value may be two hundred thousand, hers might be a hundred thousand. So she's going to pay a little less than what I would pay.
Than what you would pay, yes.
For clarity's sake, I just want to.
Okay.
I just have, it's the Neil Crutchfield, it's pronounced Sennella, but spelled Seneel, Seneel Crutchfield. Question, why are we increasing? When the county is already doing increases, why is the city, why is the city of Glanon increasing?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you want my answer? Uh, the, the budget is based on the constant yield.
I understand that.
And that's what's being proposed by the administration. The council wanted to take a look at what accepting this current year's tax rate, this current year, FY twenty-three, of point three 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 eight would look like in terms of what it would produce in revenue, which is what Mr. Stewart has done. And the council's now considering which to go with. And the administration, again, has recommended not exceeding the constant yield for this year. So there would not be a tax increase.
No. And I'll also add that, there, yeah, so there are different assessments in the budget. I think trash is, certain things have gone up. And so as part of our due diligence, we advertised the, the rate that we paid last year, which would be increased because the property values increased. And so we just put that in there to do our due diligence and we're going to determine whether we should stick with the rate the state gave or if we're going to increase it to the three 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 eight, which is the rate that we paid last year.
So I heard you mentioned revenue. So what's the plan for the revenue that you receive?
All of the revenue would go in the city. Any revenue that we collect for the city will go back into the city. As of now, I don't think that there is a detailed plan for the fifty-six thousand dollars to go back to the city. But it would help, the dollars that come in would help to pay city expenses. For example, our trash collection is, what, seven hundred and fifty, seven thousand dollars? And the city is footing, is footing, you know, a huge bill there. So, I mean, it, it could be used for a lot of different things.
Do we have a surplus already?
I'm sorry, Ms. Bata?
You, the city has reserves.
Reserves?
Yes.
Yes. So having an additional amount is going to benefit us far as homeowners? And if we get, if we have an increase?
I, I think the concern was that the, the trash fee went up so high and it's now, it went from, what was it, four hundred thousand up to seven hundred thousand?
I think four sixteen.
And so the concern was that that really ought to be looked at in terms of either raising the special assessment or raising taxes, kind of discussion. So we prepared for a constant yield rate hearing for this evening to have that discussion.
Right. I understand that. I'm just want to keep in mind, I'm going to have a seat, I just want to keep in mind that if you're generating raising, this constant yield raising, you, you are going to, you said revenue. All I'm hearing is revenue in my mind and it's saying, how is that benefiting homeowners? How is that, I hear you say trash, mm, we can work that in another way? That's just my take on it.
Well, I mean, we, we can raise assessments. Yeah, I think, I don't know what the assessment level is now, but that would be probably a lot higher and steeper.
So, so the assessment as it stands right now is at three hundred and one dollars, which we really want to keep at three hundred and one. However, based on the increases that we're seeing, especially for the disposal of garbage, which it's mainly set for, we would have encouraged, we would have preferred increasing the assessment. But this assessment would bring us to around three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So the difference is between accepting three, an additional ninety-eight dollars on your taxes or accepting, based on your assessment, whether you pay an additional fifty dollars or thirty dollars. And we believe that it's best for us to use the taxes, that would be thirty dollars instead of ninety-eight dollars across the board. So we step away from that and say, hey, let's consider only those incremental increases, which will not, which will max up to, for a seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar property, fifty dollars. So that's one of the reasons why we consider that as a way to.
Have the county amount, I'm going to.
Parliament?
Add the county amount along with it. So it won't just be US estimate.
So the county and the state has their own rate that they will be charging. And the city has theirs. Now remember, the city, and especially now, will be doing so much more as, well, the municipality. We will be doing so much more for the city, starting especially, this, as a matter of fact, starting this year. We're going into roads, we're going into sidewalks, we're going into parks. We're going into so many different projects to improve and make a city one that you'll be more proud of living in. So there will be a lot more changes happening, but for the good.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. All right. With that, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I do have some comments on this because I, of course, I, and I've said this before, I support maintaining a rate at point three 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 eight. My reasoning is because, Ms. Stewart, let me ask a question on this budget. Because looking at the budget that you proposed, that you submitted, it's showing a budget surplus of one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. And that's based on all general fund revenue coming into the city, correct? Okay, so if one of these items on this revenue does not come through, we're going to, we're going to see a deficit. Correct?
Yes, that's what we have.
Because I'm looking at some of the items on here and I'm looking at, like, personal property tax prior year, we have in a budget, the budget has forty thousand dollars and in twenty twenty-two, the actual was two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So where is that forty thousand dollars going to materialize? And if it doesn't materialize, we're already in a deficit of forty thousand dollars. Another item is, I was looking at business licenses. Okay, yeah, we did, we, we, you got thirty-six thousand, we collected twenty-eight thousand. We're expecting more, we're expecting it to be more vigilant this year. I mean, in twenty twenty-four, collecting business licenses than they were in twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Vacant lot building fees, forty-two thousand dollars. What is that? And there's, there's nothing to gauge it on because it's a new line item.
Yes, it's a new line item and, yes, we are, we are doing a guesstimate of what we believe could be derived from these revenues, especially the new revenues. But I want to go back to the two that you spoke about first. The personal property tax, especially, prior year or current. Those, I would say, was not properly managed previously. But this year, we have started to monitor them even closer. So I strongly believe that we will make those amount or even more because of the, the monitoring that we're doing on personal property tax. So that, that's where we stand.
Okay. And I guess that's my issue there is one, you know, any one of these items in here, we don't meet the budgeted amount on any one of these items and we could find ourselves in a deficit from, just from basic revenue, even though we do have money in reserves. Personally, I think our reserves is really, really high. And, and the reason it's high is what I keep on trying to tell you is because we have not been giving services to the citizens. There's been, and you know, there's been capital project after capital project that has not been done. And we put money aside and we just, it just rolls forward every year and we don't build anything. Again, lump off a big chunk of it, we talking about building a police station in the skinny state. Want to know what we are going to, what we, what we going to add to the pot? You know, they gave us forty thousand dollars, so what we going to put, what we going to add to it, you know? So we need to look at that. Once you start actually spending on your infrastructure, which is aging infrastructure, a lot of this money will be going, you know, out the window. Like you said, roads, sidewalks, all of that stuff, you know, parks. This building, you know, it's an old building, you know, it probably needs to be really updated. So I just think that, you know, the fifty-four thousand dollars that we were garnering from a slight increase can go a long way depending on what, how we, how we spend our money. And if we decide to give the services to the citizens that I feel they're entitled to, based on all the money that we've collected. You know, we've collected quite a bit and we got the opera funds. So I think we need to, you know, I mean, and like I said, my thing is thirty dollars a year, I can do that in two days at McDonald's. And that's just me. So I had no problem with that. So I'm just looking at the fact that I think that, you know, rolling back that tax rate, and I think we need to be clear on the tax rate. Because the tax rate that we currently have right now and that we're under is point three 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 eight.
Right, yes.
That's what we have it on, okay? And the constant yield tax rate is the lesser rate, the lesser rate, because we want to bring, we want to, only charge the people what they paid last year in twenty twenty-four. So that's the constant yield rate. So I think that's where people get kind of confused, you know? So in order to, people to pay less, pay the same thing they paid last year, you got to roll the tax rate back because the assessments went up. So the tax rate got to go down in order to, so they don't get that tax increase.
Exactly.
Okay, so right now, we're currently paying point three 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 eight. So, okay. I just want, and that's what I, me as a council member would prefer to keep it at. But that's just me, you know? So I just wanted to clear that up and just, you know, just look at a budget. Whenever I see a budget that's, that's a balanced budget, like I said, you don't, you miss one, one item on there, you know? And thank God, we do have reserves, but there's been plenty of times in the city of Glanon where we didn't have reserves. And we missed one item, we, we back here, it's council cutting things and firing people and laying people off because we don't have the money. So I just think that we need to take advantage of the assessment. That's a part of doing business and living in a community. You know, your biggest asset is your house. And as your divided goes up, you expect to pay a little bit more in taxes and take that money and put it back into your community, you know? So, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, I know we talked about this last year, but I do think that we need to look at the timing of when the budget is created because we're sort of working backwards. And I think it's very difficult for the citizens to get an understanding of what's driving the cost, how we're intending to spend it. I think we need to look at having the budget prepared sooner so that this is the end of the conversation around the budget. If we can go through the budget and look at those items and really challenge them to Councilman Herring's point on the feasibility of actually collecting those types of fees or not, what's the level of risk for each of these items? And that would give us a better understanding of where we are at the bottom line and help us make a better decision, a more informed decision. Because now we're going to, we're going to vote on this because we have to, because of the, the timing that this needs to be done. And then we're going to go through a budget. It's backwards. So, and I know that the charter, you know, it stipulates that the budget needs to be done, I think, what, April fifteenth or something? But we need to look at doing that sooner so that we can come to a place where we have an agreed-upon budget that aligns with whatever rate we're going to be voting on at this time of the year.
Ms. President, may I follow up on that?
Yes, Councilman Herring?
And to follow up on Councilwoman Fareed's comments, I mean, I think she's right. We get the rate actually in February, correct? We get the constant yield tax rate in February. And I think that's when the discussion should be had with this council. Okay, this is the tax rate, this is how much we're going to bring in, this is how much we, if you move it, if you charge this rate, this is how much we're going to bring in, if you leave it at this rate, this is how much we're not going to get. And then we can actually start from there. And the council can say, okay, well, what are y'all, what is your long-range plan? Maybe we do need to take it up, you know? Is it, are the numbers that you're looking at realistically, are we close to getting what we need to get in? And I think then we can decide, then you have a much better number to work with than to say, this council decides to say, okay, no, we don't want to go with the higher rate, we're going to go with the lesser rate. So then, and you use the higher rate, like, I think it was one year before, I think it was.
Yes.
Yeah, use the higher rate. So you had to go back and cut. Because we said, the council said at that time, we want the lower rate. You know, so I think that is a good point that she's making. We do need to start, when it comes in in February, the council needs to be informed and we need to know. So at least we can, with the treasurer, the administration and the council, we can sit and just have a conversation about, okay, what are we looking at, you know? And that'd save us a lot of time. Because this is last minute, every year is last minute like this. And since I've been on the council, it's been like this. We try to get ahead, but, you know, it's always, you know, it's a lot going on. But I think if we know going in, what we, what we're looking at, the constant yield rate, we're looking at the amount of money we're looking at coming in and what we're trying, what the administration's trying to do, I think we can probably save us some time with this.
All right.
Yes, so I just wanted to agree with Councilwoman Fareed in the fact that I think the budget should be done a bit earlier. You know, I think it should be presented at least by the end of March. I would have been ready then, I was just going over things to make sure that, you know, odds and ends meet, but the earlier, the better. And, and it require that the council especially really do have a retreat in January or December, just to ensure that we have an understanding as the administration where you're coming from, and how we can meet those criteria by setting a budget to agree with what you want. So that's what I would recommend for next year. I hope we could do that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no other comments from the council. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Ms. Wilson. Good evening.
I just wanted to say, some of the points that, when I was sitting back there, I was listening to Councilman Herring, and I thought that some of the points that he made were very good points as far as additional funds coming in, because when I looked at the budget, I didn't realize that new things, new revenues were expected to be, to be coming in, things that we've never had come in before. So if we don't know how that's going to play out, then you're kind of like putting yourself in an awkward position. So that's why perhaps we need to have the yield rate to be the 0.338 or whatever that is. So, and also with the, when I did look at the proposed budget, you all have quite a few salary increases that you're, you're proposing. And so with those, which I think are utterly ridiculous, you would have to have monies available. So I would hope that the, that the council would consider those points that Mr., that Councilman Herring made, because I don't think that we should cut ourselves short.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Did I miss anybody else? All right. Hearing no other comments. And now, oh.
Ms. President, I think you may want to get a consensus on what the council want to do, which rate they want to use.
We're going to go for consensus on keeping the rate the same at the 3338. So first we do the consensus, if that consensus pass, then we'll do a vote on the ordinance. All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Vote.
Yes, yes, to keep it at 3338, which would increase the revenues, or no to revert it back.
Yes, to keep it at point 3338, which is our current rate, but will result in an increase to citizens in accordance to their property value, and it's increasing because their property values are increasing, not because the rate is increasing.
Thank you.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
After better clarity from the council, my council, my colleagues concerning this matter, and knowing that the rate now is 3338, I say yes, let's keep it at that rate.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes. All right. So is there motion to, I'm sorry, did we read this?
Yeah, adopted as an, a motion to adopt it as an emergency ordinance.
Mr. Curtis, one change in that version, version number one. Will exceed the constant yield tax rate of .3273.
What line?
What line?
24.
Yes. And the third, whereas, so we change that to .3273.
Okay.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, Council President?
.3273. Okay. In the version of the emergency ordinance that we'll be voting on, on line 23 to 24, whereas the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year 2024 will exceed the constant yield rate of, there was an error, it currently states .3338, but it should be .3273.
3273. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Is there motion to bring this to the floor as an emergency ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
In discussion, opposition, oh, well, in discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
By Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries 6-0.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance, please?
Emergency ordinance 08, 2023, the sponsor is President Curtis, at the request of the administration. Public hearing is today, date of introduction of discussion actually began May 1st. Excuse me, an emergency ordinance to set the real property tax rate and personal property tax rate for fiscal year 2024. Whereas in accordance with section 6-303 of the Tax Property Article of the Anointed, Annotated Code of Maryland, the city council is charged with establishing a municipal corporation tax, corporate tax rates on and before the 1st of July of each year. And whereas a public hearing must be held prior to the establishment of said tax rate if the rate will exceed the constant yield tax rate as calculated by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. Whereas the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024 will exceed the constant tax yield rate of .3273. And whereas a public hearing on exceeding the constant tax rate was held on May 22nd, 2023. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in session on the 22nd day of May, 2023. Number one, effective July 1st, 2023, all real and property, personal property will, which is subject to taxation by the city, shall be taxed and assessed value of such real and property tax as such value is determined by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation at the rates as follows. Real property, .03338 per 100 assessed value. Personal property, a dollar point 15 per 100 assessed value. Effective July 1st, 2023, the special assessment will remain at $301. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage by the council, but shall not be effective until approved by the mayor or passed by the mayor's veto by the city council.
Thank you.
Mr. President, point of order, I just want to clarify the number that you read. The point, you said point 03, that's 3 cents. It should be actually .3338. Just want to make that clarification for those who are listening, because if they get 3 cents, you say 3 cents, you give them 33, you know who's going to hear it.
All right.
I apologize for that.
Is there motion to bring this amended ordinance, emergency ordinance, to the floor for a vote?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Fareed. In discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries 6-0.
All right. Before we adjourn, just want to let the council know that we do have, and citizens know, that we do have a work session, a budget work session next Wednesday. It'll be virtual, so you don't have to come out here. I do want to gauge your availability, you know, for the overflow being the following day, so that we can knock it out, so we can break it down in sections, we don't have to try to go through everything in one night, that we can put it in sections, handle some stuff on the 31st, and come back on Thursday and handle the second piece. Or we can pull all nighter. So open to any suggestions. Are, is council available on June 1st, Thursday?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? June 1st?
When is, when is the, when is the first one?
It's the day before, on Wednesday.
31st?
On 31st.
I don't know, do back to backs. That's fine.
We can, we can start early and just, you know, have an extended meeting, if you think that that will help.
Me, I think we're going to need at least two days.
Yeah, I think we'll need two days too, but.
So I'm fine, that's fine.
All right.
I'm fine.
So, Vice President Ferguson, are you good with the first? Mr. Councilman Hairston?
Yeah, I'm good.
It'll be virtual. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll plan to meet on the 31st and the 1st. We'll send out an agenda with the sections that we will cover, so that, you know, council members can be ready at each, each meeting. We can do 6:30, start a little bit early.
That'll work.
6:30, I think is good. All right. Hearing no other, any other announcements or comments?
Yes.
Councilman, ah, shoot, sorry.
You thought to bang the galloping.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, just want to remind citizens that on this Wednesday in the Gold Room at 7:00 PM, we will be hosting a town hall about Seventh Street Park Neighborhood Design, who has been working with us, will be presenting two designs for citizens to comment and react on. They've come up with some lovely diagrams for us to review for that space. It'll be a great space for the children as well as the rest of the community, and we are looking forward to seeing you there and having your participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Any other announcements from council members? Hearing none, the time is 8:09, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Move this, oh, can you sign this, please?
Recording in progress. Recording.